Paul Thompson.
Here.
Festerson.
Here.
Gernat.
Here.
Jerem.
Here.
Mr. President.
Here. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance or remain standing for our application today by Councilmember Amy Duncan.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. While saying the Pledge of Allegiance on a day like today when we all get to take advantage of our rights and our liberty and our freedom and we get to choose who leads us in this nation. And I know that this political season has been probably more contentious and more frustrating. We're all probably ready for today to be over regardless of what party we affiliate with or what candidates we're electing to vote. But I want everybody to keep one thing in mind. We have God here today and we'll have God here tomorrow regardless of our president. And I'd ask everybody to say a prayer tonight for our nation, for all the candidates, and say a prayer for whoever becomes our president in the morning whether you want to see them as president or not. That's what we can do. We need to be thankful for our freedoms, thankful we get to select our president, and say a prayer for him tomorrow morning. That's what I ask. Thank you.
Amen.
City Clerk certifies publication on the daily record the official newspaper on November 4th notes for a brief council and regular city council meeting November 8, 2016. The current copy of meetings acts posting white binder on the East Wall of legislative chambers.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this meeting of the Omaha City Council. City Council, thanks you for joining us today. As a courtesy to those in attendance, we ask you to turn off or mute any of your cell phone, any of your electronic devices. Mr. Clerk?
Ordinance on finalizing and resolutions array bonds. Item number five, ordinance authorizing directing an issue of general obligation bonds and an issue of general obligation refunding bonds that City of Omaha in aggregate principal amount not to exceed $95,300,000 to be termed for identification purposes various purpose and refunding bond series 2016A and general obligation refunding bond series 2016B. We have an amendment of the hold.
Public hearing on agenda item number five was held on 11/1/2016. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve amendment of the hold.
Moved and seconded to approve amendment of the hold. No lights, roll call.
Milton.
Yes.
Paul Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gernat.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Amendment of the hold for five is passed seven to zero. Item number six is a resolution that preliminary official statement pertaining to the issuance and sale of general obligation refunding bonds titled various purpose refunding bond series 2016A and general obligation refunding bond series 2016B is hereby approved.
Public hearing on agenda item number six is today. Proponents, please. Saying none of there any opponents. Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
Motion to approve.
Moved and seconded to approve item six. No lights, roll call.
Milton.
Yes.
Paul Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gernat.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Six is adopted, seven to zero. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7H, due to no meeting being held November 15th and November 29th, agenda items number seven through eight shall be laid over four weeks to December 6, 2016 for publication in public hearing. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7H, agenda item number nine through 10 shall be laid over four weeks to December 6. Special use permit, item number 11, resolution special use application to allow automotive sales in a community commercial district located at 5312 South 136th Street is hereby approved and permits and inspections is directed to issue the necessary permits. Therefore, A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number 11 is today. Proponents, please.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, Larry Jovan, 11440 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant. This is really a temporary special use permit just to serve a woodhouse until they get their facility constructed consisting of four dealerships in La Vista's jurisdiction at the southwest corner of 144th and Giles. So again, this is only for 36 months. Their lease term is only for 30 months. So it's a very temporary solution until they get their facilities built at 144th and Giles. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Saying none of there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
Motion to approve.
Moved and seconded to approve item 11. No lights, roll call.
Milton.
Yes.
Paul Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gernat.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Eleven is adopted, seven to zero. Liquor, item number 12, Bushwood Lounge, 711 North 114th Street, Class C liquor license application, no location. We're requesting a motion for a two-week layover for publication and continuing the public hearing.
Moved and seconded to layover for two weeks. No lights, roll call.
Milton.
Yes.
Paul Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gernat.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Item number 13 and 14 go together. Thirteen is Hook &amp; Lime, 735 North 14th Street, Class C liquor license, new application, new location. And fourteen is a catering application for the same applicant, same location.
Public hearing on agenda items 13 and 14 are today. Proponents, please.
Yes, Robert Malden, 7319 Park Crest Drive, La Vista, Nebraska, 68128.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Saying none of there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Is there a motion? Moved and seconded to approve items 13 and 14. No lights, roll call.
Milton.
Yes.
Paul Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gernat.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Thirteen and fourteen are adopted, seven to zero. Item number fifteen and sixteen go together. Fifteen is Embassy Suites by Hilton Omaha Downtown Old Market, 555 South 10th Street, Class I liquor license, no application, no location. And sixteen is a catering application for the same applicant, same location.
Public hearing on agenda items numbers fifteen and sixteen are today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. Stephanie Gray, 6809 Beth Avenue, Papillion, Nebraska, GM for the Embassy Suites.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Saying none of there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
Motion to approve.
Moved and seconded to approve items fifteen and sixteen. No lights, roll call.
Milton.
Yes.
Paul Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gernat.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Seventeen is adopted, seven to zero. Item number eighteen is Select Mark, 2401 Leavenworth Street, package liquor license application, no location, is an upgrade.
Public hearing on agenda item number eighteen is today. Proponents, please.
Adil Fraz, 7303 North 142nd Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68142.
Thank you.
Hassan Alahi, 2024, Trinity Court, Sioux City, Iowa.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Saying none of there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
Motion to approve.
Moved and seconded to approve item 17. No further lights, roll call.
Milton.
Yes.
Paul Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gernat.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Six is adopted, seven to zero. Liquor, item number 12, Bushwood Lounge, 711 North 114th Street, Class C liquor license application, no location. We're requesting a motion for a two-week layover for publication and continuing the public hearing.
Moved and seconded to layover for two weeks. No lights, roll call.
Milton.
Yes.
Paul Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gernat.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Item number 13 and 14 go together. Thirteen is Hook &amp; Lime, 735 North 14th Street, Class C liquor license, no application, no location. And fourteen is a catering application for the same applicant, same location.
Public hearing on agenda items 13 and 14 are today. Proponents, please.
Yes, Robert Malden, 7319 Park Crest Drive, La Vista, Nebraska, 68128.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Saying none of there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Jerem.
Yes, gentlemen, thank you for coming today and just wondered if you were aware of the restrictions on the current license there in terms of the type of alcohol sales that they have at the location.
Yes, we do. And because across the street and all of the locations, like other gas station, everyone have. So that's why we're asking, please give us the chance to, so we can do that.
One of the things, I don't know if you're familiar with the neighborhood, but there's been a lot of transition in the neighborhood. There's been some improvements made in the neighborhood. The All Nations store across the street diagonally from you to the northeast is sort of see grandfathered in that that they had their full license privileges for a long time. The one that is immediately north from you is a very small store that has kind of a unique situation. But when you purchased this business, you were aware of the restriction on it?
Yes, that's what I'm saying. I was hoping, because we in the business, so that's a convenience store business is really competitive, really out. So we have to have, if you guys can approve us, that'd be really appreciated for us and we can do a little more better and we can make the owner better and it looks better. And that will be my hour. You can say that. We've got a request for you guys.
Well, the interesting thing is, is since the restriction is in place, there's been more investment in that neighborhood. There's been, just to your northeast, there's the new coffee shop, there's the new restaurant, half block north of Leavenworth, to your west, Ferguson Bike Shop, there's the Allianz corporate offices, there's the Travers Row homes that are just all redone for several million dollars. There's more investors looking even at 27th Street on the south side. So that would be my concern and increasing the density at your location would then trigger in my mind a concern that perhaps this balance that seems to be working would be placed in jeopardy. So if you were willing to keep things the way they are, you'd have, as the council member for that area, you'd have my support. But if you wanted to upgrade, I don't think I could support that. But I'll leave the decision to you. No other lights on, so you kind of have to make a decision.
Yeah, well, I would ask for more if something you can do it like, if we can sell at least singles, right, and structure like we cannot sell the single cans and at least we can sell the beer, not the liquors. Hope you guys can do that.
Well, why don't we, why don't we leave things the way they are?
Okay.
And you'll have my support, okay?
Yes.
If you want to come back in a year, I'm not saying I would change my mind.
Okay.
But just, let's, I would prefer not to rock the boat, so to speak, because we've seen the reinvestment in the neighborhood. There's positive results. There's even more interest than others in coming, building more residential units, which would then increase your customer base and would be a good thing for you.
Okay, thank you.
Are you willing to make that amendment to your application to leave things current conditions? Okay, with that understanding, Mr. Clerk?
Well...
Do I need to do anything else?
Yes, you do. Right now, there is an off-sale beer license. They're asking for a package. Are you allowing them a package with the restrictions or are you requesting that they go back to the off-sale beer only?
Well, I'd like to keep things the way they are, so tell me legally what form that needs to take.
We can have our attorney come down and tell us that. But I believe they'd have to request an amendment to an off-sale beer with the understanding that the restriction for no single sales continues.
William Acosta Trejo, Assistant City Attorney. You're correct, Mr. Clerk.
So the motion is to allow amendment to off-sale packaged beer only? No restriction to no single sales?
Correct.
Okay, that's my motion.
Second. Moved and seconded to approve 18, subject to the conditions.
Well, no, it's, to amend 18 to off-sale beer with...
Amend 18 to off-sale beer only.
No singles.
And no singles. It's been moved and seconded. No further lights, roll call.
Milton.
Yes.
Paul Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gernat.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
As amended.
With restrictions.
Roll call. With restrictions, roll call.
Milton.
Yes.
Paul Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gernat.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Nineteen is adopted as amended, seven to zero with restrictions. Item number, that was 18.
That was, that was 18.
That was 18. Nineteen is Select Mark at 2411 North 30th Street, package liquor license application, no location, is an upgrade.
Public hearing on agenda item number 19 is today. Proponents, please. Are you the same?
Yeah.
Okay, if you could just say your name for the record.
Okay, Adil Fraz, 7303 North 142nd Street, Omaha, Nebraska.
Okay.
Hassan Alahi, 2024, Trinity Court, Sioux City, Iowa.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Saying none of there any opponents who wish to be heard? You all can have a seat up front here.
Pastor Ron Smith, 3841 Decatur Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68111.
Rosie Schuman, 3526 Seward Street.
Eric Carpenter, 4607 South 168th Avenue.
Tila Mickles, 6119 Florence Boulevard.
Thank you. Is there going to be a representative?
Chris Foster, 3413 California Street.
Is anyone going to make comments? Okay.
I start. Okay, so we live in the, oh, Rosie Schuman, 3526 Seward Street. Thank you. So thank you for hearing us and we want to and continue to invest with what the city has already done in Prospect Village. We've received a block grant in the last three years and we've made significant improvements in that 33-block area. There are already three packaged liquor businesses within that 33-block area and so that's about one for every 10 blocks. By putting two more within a half-mile radius of our neighborhood, you're taking us to every five or six blocks, which we don't feel fits with a residential area. I also want to draw attention to the Live Well Omaha document. That's a community report card from Live Well Omaha that shows that our area of the northeast Omaha compared to the rest of Douglas County suffers significantly with safety in their area. So while Douglas County have 2.7% of residents are concerned about safety, in my neighborhood, 40% of the people are concerned about their safety. And then also victims of violent crime in all of Douglas County, the number, where did it go? Sorry. In the past five years, there it is. 4.9 people in Douglas County would report that percentage and ours is 9.2. So it's almost double that, victims of violence crime. Having talked to Captain Gray of the northeast precinct, he shows, he meets with us at Abide. I work at Abide and go to Bridge Church, which is just up the street from there. He shows us crime reports and shots fired reports on a quarterly basis and there are more density of that around that 40th and Hamilton area and also around that 29th and Lake and Parker area. There's just more violent crime that happens in those areas. We don't want to add packaged liquor to increase the likelihood of that happening, so.
Okay, thank you.
Did you want to make that part of the record, that document part of the record?
Sure. I can also make part of the record the Heartland 2050 Plan that has three areas. Economic growth is part of that and I understand that and we are certainly supportive of economic growth in our area, but it also talks about health and wellness areas as growth areas. And we obviously in our part of town have a bigger hurdle to come over with some of those health and access to that healthy piece and that's what we're here to advocate for, that we focus on businesses that come in that promote a healthier lifestyle rather than contribute to, potentially contribute to more violence, domestic violence into crime.
If you can get those, Clerk, please.
Wonderful.
Okay. Any other opponents wish to be heard?
And, just...
Name for the record, name, I'll just for the record again.
Ron Smith, Bridge Church, Abide Network. Because of the experience I had with dealing with some of the inner-city stuff and all the violence that go on the street, I'm also known as Chaplain Ron Smith and I believe that this opportunity for them to see license in these two particular areas would be a destructive in the sense of it bring more anti-safe environment more than anything. I'm concerned with the young kids that go to the gas station up the street, being exposed to panhandlers, being exposed to behavior that's not in the community present day right now. Even looking at from the perspective of me being safe, my mail goes on my ports and I believe when we come in with alcohol and those destructive behaviors and tendencies, that it allows our safety to be exposed, at risk. So I'm really adamant about that. You know me, I just say no, just say no. And again, it's many places, you know, to go and have a drink, you know, to get beer or to get wine that's down the street on Saddle Creek, up on the street on Cummings. So I just feel like as a residential area, we don't need it.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Chaplain, while you're there, I just wanted to extend my thanks to you for continuing to do the valuable work that you do dealing with at-risk youth and some really hardcore gang members that you deal with. And, you know, I just appreciate your continued efforts.
Thanks a lot. Appreciate that.
Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard?
Yes, Tila Mickles, founder and CEO of Compassion in Action. And I prepared a letter and I'll leave it here and I would prefer to read that. This document is to reject the above caption in our neighborhood, which is the issue of a request of liquor license in the Prospect Village area and surrounding, as it is not in the best interest of the current development, historic renovation and neighborhood beautification taking place in that area. These initiatives and many others, including the organization of the Prospect Village Neighborhood Association, are the result of major collaboration efforts, networking and building relationships with an active engagement and support of the Omaha City Planning Department. After regular monthly meetings for two years in this community and now continued quarterly meetings, the momentum for neighborhood improvement through community involvement is alive and well. There are more than 14 different dialects and languages in this area and many are refugees focused on their new life and do not need the negative influence of easy access to alcohol in the neighborhood. There are plenty of businesses that provide that, who are already established and not in the personal space of children and family in their own neighborhood. Through the collaboration and partnership of churches, businesses, community agencies, universities and other special groups and residents, much has been accomplished in this area and we need to continue without the negative influences that alcohol bring to the environment. I am the founder and CEO of Compassion in Action located in the former Wesley House and an active community advocate. We work with people in prison and are preparing them to, with the help of the community, to re-enter society as assets and not liabilities. We also have our Raw Dog Youth Core Gang Prevention Program for boys five to 13, breaking the cycle from cradle to crime. The influence of alcohol sold in the neighborhood where families are already struggling to attain goals of health, wellness and prosperity would not only hinder their progress but create additional problems. We are in full agreement with all the collaborative partners, families and schools and children who recognize we do not need this in our community. Thank you in advance for hearing my concerns and as Councilman Jerem had already brought to our attention, there's a lot happening in that area and we would prefer to keep that momentum going.
Thank you. And again, Ms. Mickles, just so, just while you're at the podium, I just wanted to thank you as well because you are one of those really strong advocates for young people, Raw Dogs program. I've seen it on several occasions, really like what you're doing there. The prison ministry, I think, is extremely important and I don't know how you do it sometimes, but I wanted to say thank you for all the work that you put together as well in that effort and thank you for the continued cooperation with our Omaha Police Department.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Any other opponents who wish to be heard?
Hi, Chris Foster, 3413 California Street. And even though I live in Gifford Park, our neighbors to the north are extremely important to us and these are the very things that we fight also. So what Rosie and Tila mentioned, I just echo those. I know quite a few people in those neighborhoods and I think, you know, with all the investment, both time and energy in the City of Omaha, I hate to see taking a step backwards. So I'm in opposition of the liquor licenses.
Thank you, Chris, and thank you for your activity in the community as well. I mean, you all are, go above and beyond. It's appreciated by this council. Any other opponents who wish to be heard?
Yes, Eric Carpenter, Christ Community Church. I've served, I served as a pastor for the past six years and we've partnered with Abide in this neighborhood. And for the past six years, we've definitely been able to see the standards of the neighborhood raised. I've been a neighborhood advocate for two years and we've, we just want to continue to see the positive change that people have thanked us for and that they have definitely seen. It's a safer community and we, part of what we want to do is we want to continue to purchase homes and renovate these homes and continue to build relationships with the neighborhoods and we just feel like this is a positive step forward and that's why we're against the ordinance.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard?
Hi, my name's Yvonne White Thomas, 3025 Seward Street. I just wanted to let you know that I, I too echo the same thing that you heard today. As a resident that's been in the North Omaha community for over 20 years in that area, I've seen things go bad and good and even better and I would like that to continue and I hope that we grow as a neighborhood and a community and continue this forward because I can't imagine going backwards again and to put another liquor store or something like that in our neighborhood would, I think, be detrimental to our children. So I just thank you for this time.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard?
Hi, my name's Robert Schumacher. I live in 9536 Military. I've had property in the area for 40 years. I've watched it go from bad to worse when it had alcohol in the area. When that gas station closed on 40th and Hamilton, it was a blessing to the area. Since that time, it's been quiet. With the opening of the gas station, it was fine. You start putting liquor back in there and you've got another problem.
Okay, I think you're talking about, I think you're talking about the next item coming up.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
But they're including that too in theirs. And I'll get out of the way and I'll leave because it's your decision, your knowledgeable. But in the experience I've had, I think it is far better to let that thing sit as a gas station than put drugs back on that corner, which is what it will do. So I'll stop there.
Thank you. Thank you, I appreciate it. And you can still talk on the next item because that one, that's the one you're talking about on Hamilton, on Hamilton, that'll be coming up next.
I wasn't sure. I thought they...
Yeah, yeah. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard on item 19, which is 2411 North 30th Street? Do the, do the applicants, do you wish any rebuttal time? Do you want to? about on Hamilton, that'll be coming up next.
I wasn't sure, I thought they...
Yeah, yeah. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard on item 19, which is 2411 North 30th Do the applicants, do you wish any rebuttal time? Do you want to?
Well, thanks for neighborhoods, and thanks to everybody. So we're going to work how much we can with them, no problem at all. Whatever you guys decide, we take.
Okay, thank you. Public hearing is closed. Dr. Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. President. If I could have...
You can go ahead and be seated.
If I could have Mr. Acosta Trejo come back up?
William Acosta Trejo, Assistant City Attorney.
William, occasionally, we're aware of the evolution of this whole thing regarding alcohol density, but everybody in the audience may not. And so if you could refresh our memory, and I'll start off by saying, at one time, this council used to take a view that if you offer it one place, you had to offer it another place. But then there was a time period where we brought up the issue of density, especially in the areas where there are chronicled problems, where the police have to show up quite a bit, or there are issues that are long-term. And am I correct in saying that the council, unlike years ago, now we have the extra ability to take into consideration concentration of problems and concentrations of liquor stores in certain areas that have historically had problems? Is that correct?
Yes, and that's... Go ahead.
Go ahead.
I was going to say yes, and that's something that this council has done numerous times. We don't, we don't need to ignore the past, certainly. There's specific locations throughout the city that, when alcohol is introduced to those areas, it does spike incidents that involve usually police involvement, but certainly have their own issues for other things that are nuisance to neighbors and other citizens. So that's something that this council does get to consider, and that is also a consideration that goes up to the Liquor Control Commission.
And so if we happen to not support this, it's not that we're trying to be unfair in granting one group competition or an advantage over another, it's that we have a higher goal of public safety and reclaiming back our, the streets, or part of the city from the streets. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you, sir. With that in mind, Mr. President, these are streets that I grew up on, and this particular area I know is a problem area, because it was an area not only 10 years ago, or 15. This has been a problem for about 30 to 35 years. And even to the point where I witnessed, eyewitnessed issues in here. So I'd have to say that this is one of those exceptions where I, because I normally will vote and give a person a chance, but I think the higher goal in this case is to vote no. So I'll move, I'll move the denial.
It's been moved and seconded to deny the application. We have another light, Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. I would just say that I agree with Councilmember Thompson and seconded that denial motion. I agree, there are times when too much density is a problem, particularly in areas of sensitivity. Just this morning, the planning committee heard an update on the Prospect Village plan and all the positive things that are going on in this area, largely as a result of the people that are here today. So I find that convincing, and I find their testimony convincing on this item as well. So I did second the motion and will support denial, and believe that'll be my opinion on the number 20 as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Gentlemen, if you could come up for a minute, please, the two applicants, if you could come up. It's been moved and seconded to deny. As a representative for that area, there's no chance that I'm going to support anything other than what is currently there. And there are limits on that. There are no single cans, there are no airplane shots, there's no, you know, all of those sorts of things. That's what currently exists there. There is a motion to deny, and I have to follow along with that, but if that denial is not successful, then the best I as the representative for that area is going to be willing to do is to keep things the way they are.
That's fine.
There has been too much development in that area with 75 North. Across the street from you is Walgreens, and that Walgreens, and talking to the management of that Walgreens, we agreed that that would be the only Walgreens that would not sell liquor on that corner. So you really don't have competition there.
That's fine.
And so that would be what I would support, but there is, I want you to know, there's a motion to deny your application altogether that's on the floor. And we'll have to take that vote first. Should that pass, if that passes, it passes. If it fails, the only thing that I would be willing to do is continue to keep things the way they are.
Yeah, we're going to take a same, what we have right now, that's fine. We're happy with that, no problem.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to deny. There are no further lights, roll call.
Milton?
No.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Jaram?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
The motion is, the motion to deny is approved on the six to one vote.
Next item?
Item number 20, Select Mart at 3874 Hamilton Street, packaged liquor license, new application, new location.
Public hearing on agenda item number 20.
It does not conform to Rule 7, so you'd have to suspend Rule 7 if you were to...
Suspend Rule 7, okay.
And there's communications and petitions opposing.
Moving to second to suspend Rule 7, roll call?
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes. Public hearing today, the proponents, please, on item number 20.
Hassan Alahi, 2024, Decatur, City of Iowa.
Adel Farad, 7303 North 142nd Street of Monumental Aska.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? See, you guys have a seat in front again. Are there any opponents who wish to be heard?
Eric Carpenter, 4607 South 168th Avenue.
If you could say your name and then give your testimony, that would be good, and if we could have people come to the front, so we, you know, so we're moving along rather expeditiously.
Ron Smith, 3841 Decatur Street.
Okay, are you going to make any comments, or you just?
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah.
I'd like for you to make your comments when you say your name, so that we, so that the record stays clear.
So make my comments now?
Yes.
What I want to say, cool. I'm sorry, I thought the one on Lake Street was by my church. This one here is by my house. So I'm like, and again, it's safety, again, it brings unwanted environment into a residential community that's not wanted. I don't know if you ever experienced people begging in front of places that sell alcohol, and the panhandling that's going on, the violence that's going on outside where you sell alcohol. I'm just reminded of a quick trip down the street, that they often have secure police officers through the time that they sell packaged liquor. So when I think about this particular location, I think about my grandbabies, going to the store of the street, because the store do sell potato chips and corn chips, and I don't think that's a good place to mix alcohol with that. So that's my concern.
Thank you. Let me also say that those who testified for the prior application on 20, on 30th and Lake, we can apply your testimony to this one as well, so you don't have to testify again. But you have to ask that testimony be, okay? If you do that, then we're, then we can move along rather quickly here.
Tila Mickles, Compassion in Action, located in the former Wesley House, 2001 North 35th Street. And I'd like to submit the information that I did prior to the other location for the same reason.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Rosie Schuman, 3526 Seward Street. I'd like to submit the same information prior, as well as the things that I handed in, right? And to just add to Ron's story, my son has been solicited in front of that, my 16-year-old son has been solicited in front of that area. So there is already opportunity for our children to not be safe, to increase that, just breaks my heart, so.
Thank you. Any other opponents who wish to be heard?
Murray Hayes, 4104 Lafayette. Just real briefly, if you don't know the boundaries of Walnut Hill neighborhood, I'm the Vice President of Walnut Hill Neighborhood Association. So we go from Hamilton to Cummings, and Saddle Creek to 40th. So if you look at what's available already, as a neighborhood, we have Family Fair at Cummings and Saddle Creek, we have QT and Megasaver at Hamilton and Saddle Creek, and then we have the convenience store at 40th and Cummings. So if this is approved, we're going to be surrounded on all four corners by liquor. So if you look at Walnut Hill neighborhood specifically, we've worked very hard over the last few years. Streets are cleaner, houses are selling very briskly in this neighborhood, and some at record-setting prices for the neighborhood. So we're seeing a huge influx of families, of children. It's amazing the amount of kids we have compared to five, seven years ago. So we're seeing, you know, we don't have the city development in Walnut Hill. Blackstone is kind of creeping our way, so we're seeing great things happen. This is something that we don't need. We were here years ago, fighting this petition, we're back again. I think the other thing that's important to note is that neither of the proponents live in the neighborhood. So there's no way for them to know the effects that selling that alcohol has on our neighborhood. They're not the ones down there cleaning up the trash off the street. We're the ones that do that. They're not the ones running off the intoxicated people, walking up and down the street. That's us. So, you know, there's plenty of spots around to buy the alcohol, all within walking distance. We just don't need another one on that corner when we have so much going on right now.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard?
Chris Foster, 3413 California, if you could submit my previous information. One more thing, City Sprouts Community Garden is literally a block away, and 15 years, or 16 years ago, my wife and I visited that community garden, and that's what inspired our Gifford Park one, and they do amazing things there, youth garden program, outreach to the community. So I would keep that in mind also.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard?
Eric Carpenter, 4607 South 168th Avenue. I would just like to submit my previous information as well.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard?
Mary Thorstensen, 4002 Hamilton Street. I am co-owner of Harga String Instruments and Forty Street Theater, just across the street from the gas station. We've invested a lot of time and money in that corner, and it just would be a shame to regress, I feel, is what would happen. And we try to, there's always jobs to be done in our area, and we try to hire the people hanging out on the street, and I can tell you from firsthand experience that the days that they've been drinking, they don't want to work. But the days that they haven't been drinking, they're all about it. So I can say, I can see the effects of it, so that's all I have to say.
Thank you. And keep it, I owe you guys a visit too, by the way. So we'll be seeing each other soon. Thank you. Any other opponents who wish to be heard?
Jeannie Dickis, 4518 Hamilton, Omaha. Hi, it's me again. I was here about nine, seven years ago, and here's a little article that went all, and I have a copy of it I can give you, all the hard work that we did for two years, taking it to Supreme Court, and it was about this location in our neighborhood. I'm with Orchard Hill neighborhood. And since we have not had this liquor issue on that corner, it's been just amazing. It really has. And with Mary and John and what they've done, this is the first real burst of improvement that we've had, and I know it's going to get bigger. I mean, he's done an amazing job on that building. I invite all of you down there to look at that, the Hamilton Theater, that was there from 18...
1896.
1896, and they're restoring this building beautifully. There was a huge crowd there the other night for a concert, I mean, it's amazing. And so things are looking up, and if we do this with liquor, again, on that corner, it's just, I mean, I feel like we're taking 10 steps backwards, and from, I don't even have to tell you, do I? So I mean, it's just, don't do it. Just don't do it.
Thank you. Any other, okay. Any other opponents who wish to be heard?
I'm Diane Reby, and I'm serving as the interim director for Project Extra Mile. It's good to see you all. I have the fortune, I live in Chapel Hill, North Carolina, when I'm not here helping out Project Extra Mile. And of course, many of you know, I helped in this process, and first of all, thank you, because you've done some pretty amazing work, and to hear the conversation today is incredibly encouraging. And I'll go back and take information to people I work with across the country, and the work that we all and you all did here matters. And one of the testifiers earlier was, I think, trying to be very kind and said that these may potentially cause additional crime, et cetera. It's not potential, they really do, and what we know from the World Health Organization matters, and you're doing that work today, which tells us that one of the top three strategies to prevent excessive consumption, which ultimately all the results of that, is to deal with the issue of outlet density. And you're doing that, and with Nebraska having and being, you know, number five in the country for our binge drinking rate, everything you do matters and changes the reflection of what the state is. So that's a good thing, you're doing good work, and kudos to these neighborhood people who are so, they're just plain old inspiring. So thanks for what you're doing, and thanks for all of your commitment.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard?
Can I have part two? You had to submit those.
Keep it short.
I will. I just want, Jeannie Dickis, 4518 Hamilton, I wanted to submit the copies of the police reports we've had. I mean, this is just short, three of them, but I mean, it was just robbed the other day again. And plus, we have four, six, four of them within a six-block radius as far as alcohol sales sites.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard?
Yvonne White-Thomas, 3025 Seward. I'd just like to submit my previous information that I said before.
Thank you.
For this one.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, do the proponents, do you wish any rebuttal time or any, any closing thoughts?
Yeah, so thanks for everyone's coming in, so I didn't know that there's that much problem in that area. And just like other guys said, they have, every corners have the liquors, and everyone have ability to sell, and it's my question, why not me? And if only one gas station made that whole area really bad, then I'm supposed to close the gas station. So because if every other corners, every block have the gas station, they have liquor in it, and people just buy, they cannot walk this way, they can walk that way, so they're going to get the liquor what they want. Only thing is, which way I'm thinking, I think police is more stronger than before, maybe. That's why there is more cleaner than that areas. Maybe that caused the problem, I understand that, but that may be the police take care more than before, we're talking about five, six years ago. And I'm not saying this, you guys say a yes and a no, but every block, if the second block, if they walk this way, in the east, you're not coming to west, so he gonna get the liquor no matter what. We cannot stop whoever drink, whoever smoke, but we can, convenience stores mean it's convenience for them to get it. And they don't need to be walk all the way two blocks, three blocks this way. So that was my other side. Another thing is just, that's okay, whatever you guys, I didn't know that, because I just, I'm buying it, and I didn't know that that much problem in that area because the liquor. Or, or other thing is, if you guys can be, how about the beers? Beer be okay, six packs or something else, you guys can do it. Decide, I'm not going to do the liquor, that's fine, I understand that. I understand everybody else, all the concerns, and how about the beers? If any convenience stores, and we sell six pack, then I'm not going to become standing, drinking outside because of six pack or the 24 packs. So they're going to, like, all the peoples living on that area, they should have, they can go in, buy the beer, they go home and drink, besides you have to go to all the way to two blocks. So that's my concern, if we can do the beers, if not liquors.
Thank you.
Thanks.
First of all, let me close the public hearing. And then secondly, let me say personally, as the representative for that area, I've been acutely aware of what the concerns are in that area and what the concerns have been. I can tell you, as a matter of fact, for those who are, you all are doing the theater, when I first ran for office, my campaign office was a door down from where you all are. So I know the area well, and I know the concerns that have been there, and I know the, I know the issues that have happened in that area. It would be very difficult for me to support anything in that area at this point.
That's fine, that's fine. That's why I'm happy with that.
But I just wanted to, I just wanted to go on the record and let you know that we have some other people who want to speak as well. So let me, let me, we will entertain the council discussion at this point. Ms. Milton?
Thank you. And here's what I want to say, on the last one, I would have entertained doing just beer and no singles.
Right.
However, with your statement that you just made now, I probably wouldn't have even considered that. Here's maybe what I think you should do prior, maybe to even purchasing more gas stations. The comment that you just made, that you said, I didn't know that there were that many problems in the area.
Right.
Well...
I'm sorry.
And I understand that, but there isn't a citizen from North Omaha to Elkhorn that doesn't know that there's problems in that area. So I think every citizen in the city of Omaha knows that there are, that there are issues here, and we see it on the news every day. I think maybe what I would suggest, and I know Councilman Jaram suggests this all the time, I would suggest that you really get involved with the neighborhood groups. I don't know who's going to manage, you live in Sioux City, you're going to be here managing. I would really recommend that you get involved with Prospect Village, go to their neighborhood meetings. We also had Walnut Hill...
Beavis Park, and there's several others.
Yeah, and I mean, we had a number of them, so not just one, but I would get involved with all of them. Active, I mean actively involved, attend the meetings, join it, don't just put your name on the list, but actually become actively involved, because I think that would be very helpful. I think there's a difference between this one on Hamilton, because there was a history. I mean, what Ms. Reby was talking about, I wasn't necessarily involved in that, but I've, let's just say, I can read the history and understand what they went through. And so although I would have maybe allowed just beer at the 30th Street, I think this is an area where we can't take that chance. And it doesn't necessarily have anything to do with you, I really would encourage you to, you know, maybe kind of follow what's going on here in Omaha in the different areas, that this isn't about, necessarily about you or your business practices or anything else. I understand that you say, well, if somebody can just go down the street, then why not give it to us? But if we had that attitude, we could have, do you see what I mean? The density could get greater and greater. So at some point, we do have areas that have been grandfathered in, but there are other places that we've given liquor license to that we've had... But there are other places that we've given liquor license to that we've had to reconsider because of the issues. So on this one, the last one, I maybe would have allowed just beer, not the liquor, and not even, I mean, any liquor at all. But on this one, I'm going to have to be with, I think, with the other council members on this one. And it's not even about approving it, but I would have to do a motion to deny it for this particular location. Even though we have done that, please do get involved. Because even just gas stations, we hear of gatherings and groups and things that go on outside some of these convenience stations. And I can tell you, these neighbors have all, and all these neighborhoods worked very, very hard for a number of years. And they are really making progress. It's an area that we're very proud of. In fact, I think it's going to be a neighborhood that's going to be toured by our National Neighborhood USA group that's coming here in May, that we want to show these areas off to other people in the nation. Okay, when you have areas that you've worked that hard on, really, when they say we don't want to take steps back, they're not exaggerating. On this one. So with that, I would have to make the motion to deny this one. I don't know if there's more people that are registered to talk.
Second, there's more registered, but I'll second that. Dr. Thompson?
Yes, and you can be seated. Thank you, Mr. President. I know you know about this case because you covered it when you were in television. But it's good to hear again today from Jeannie and Diane. Both of them came to this council during my second term. And they worked pretty hard on this case. And in fact, you heard Attorney Acosta Trejo talk about the changing of the law that allows the council now to taking into consideration density and other extra issues having to do with social ills. Well, that whole change in our philosophy, this Hamilton Street was the main case. This was the main case that brought about the change. And so I like to say that I can remember at least three votes. And so to be consistent, I believe this is my fourth vote for this area. And to be consistent, I'm going to stay with a no vote. I'm going to go along with the motion. But I'd like to say to the people who are the investors, you can have a business, and you can have a business in East Omaha or West Omaha. But please do a better job of doing your homework ahead of time. And it's already been asked of you to get with the neighbors and the neighborhood associations. So it's not against you personally, but we take seriously this whole issue of reclaiming our neighborhoods, our blocks, and our kids from the streets. And again, like I said, this particular location has got a lot of history, a lot of history. And so I could not vote in favor of it because I would go against everything that I voted for in the past.
Thank you. Mr. Jaram?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This is the very northern tip of my district on the south side of Hamilton. It's kind of the dental tooth that sticks up north of Coming to Hamilton and the Beavis Park neighborhood to the south and Walnut Hill Park. And there's some great things that go on in that area that I've witnessed. And it's been a few years that we stopped by the City Sprouts. Ben and I did one afternoon. Jeannie was out in the garden working. And we noticed what a wonderful project that had become since that store had closed and the neighborhood was allowed to take itself back, so to speak, from what had been there. It also happens to be the corner where I've purchased a few bicycles, an Olympia Cycle. And I go there frequently. I happen to like the guy that owns it. And whenever I have a need for a tube, for a flat tire, a gear that won't work, or a chain that seems to be acting up on my own bikes, I go there. And it's not uncommon to see kids come in on their bikes. And they stop in all the time. Some of them are trying to get the free repair, which always seems to happen, by the way, or for a very low price, or dreaming about the upgrade to the next new and improved bicycle. But that wouldn't happen if the kids didn't feel and have a sense of safety to ride about their neighborhood. And they have that now, and I'd hate to see that placed in jeopardy. Something else also happens that I've noticed the last couple of years, just about a block and a half southeast, I mean, Augustana Lutheran Church even has outdoor services. So all since that neighborhood has been coming back. And I don't think you could say with certainty that those outdoor services would be happening if they didn't have a sense of safety and security that they now have. If, you know, there were trouble to come back to that corner. If the applicant was not aware of the issues, there's even a gang that has its name based upon Fortieth Street, that's just a couple of blocks north of there. And there's more shots fired there, I would wager, if you could wager, there than anywhere else in the city in recent years. And I know, it's been a while since I've seen the map that you can get, by the way, with a bunch of red dots that shows the city where there are shots fired. And it's amazing, there's so many shots fired in that area that it looks like it's solid red from the red color of the dots, just north of here. So I'm very hesitant to go back and risk all those things. But while you're here, the thought occurred to me to ask you something that I heard recently, if you could come up. I heard recently that the Valero at fifty-second and eleven were sold. Is that something that you acquired as well?
No, that one is, we have planned to, not working on that one, that gas station.
That's not one of, it's in your...
No, just on the ask for, that's Hamilton, if we can get the beer. So that'd be fine. If not, that's fine.
Thank you, if you could have a seat. And by the way, I heard, Mary, and you don't have to confirm this, maybe you're sworn to secrecy, but I heard there was a concert recently, and the same Omaha artist, Connor Oberst, who played a set identical to what just happened at your theater, happened, he played in Radio City Music Hall. So you're nodding along, is that rumor confirmed? So just to show you what a comeback that neighborhood has made in this theater, that you'd have someone like Connor Oberst, with an artist, willing to go back and kind of lend a hand to breathe spirit and life into that area, so. Yeah. So I'll be joining the, in supporting the motion.
Thank you. Mr. Gernat?
Thank you, Mr. President. A gentleman earlier, I believe, asked us a question if we had ever been a victim of panhandle. And my answer to that was yes. Twenty-five years ago, in my other life. And as most recent, as of this past Monday. In front of a architectural firm in a local business district, got panhandled there. So my point is, is that that problem has been around a long time. And to attribute it to convenience stores, I think is a little bit unfair. I'm not saying anybody here did that today. I'm just putting that out as a general statement, maybe for future reference. But that problem, it's been around, it hasn't been solved, we still deal with it, it's the same game, but different players today. And maybe a few more of them. So I would, I think I have a pretty good idea how the vote's going to go today. I know that the neighbors, and adjoining neighbors, when they all got together, provided data. And there was a case, as Dr. Thompson had mentioned, that said, we need to start listening to the neighborhood groups. And we did. I will more than likely support what is going to happen here today. But I just wanted to, don't, for those in the future that, who may come down here and opposing something, I don't want the people out that are watching us on television to think that, oh, there's something new, they found something new. Well, no, that's not the case. That problem has been around for a long time, and government hasn't settled it yet. We haven't found a solution. So I give my hats off to the neighborhood groups for what you did a few years back. Opened up a lot of eyes. And I think the group, this council seated today, realizes that. And all the things that, I did three tours of duty at Fortieth and Nicholas, at the old police precinct there. Remember that horse-drawn fire barn that used to sit there? And, yeah, there was a store down there. And there were problems. Different management now, different ownership. But the things that have happened in that neighborhood since I left police service, and that facility is now green space, with the church and the bicycle shop that's coming in there, and the development that's going on, and taking the old police, that one theater is going to have a pretty cool concert there, hopefully soon. And the change in the small businesses and what the faith community has been doing. Maybe to drop one of those broken spoes in there is not a good idea. I don't want to, I want to be part of the progress and the ongoing wellness that's coming back to that neighborhood. I appreciate, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to deny, there's no further lights, roll call.
Milton? Pauls? Thompson? Festerson? Gernat? Jaram? Mr. President?
Yes.
Item twenty is denied on a seven-zero vote. Now we need to read the state rules.
Roll call.
Milton, Pauls, Thompson, Festerson, Gernat, Jaram, Mr. President. Item number twenty-one is Beacon Hills, sixty-seven fifty Mercy Road. Request permission for an addition to the present class C and catering liquor license on outdoor area to the west.
Public hearing on agenda item number twenty-one is today, proponents, please.
John Hughes, one-one-five-five-zero, I Street.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve item twenty-one, Mr. Gernat. Oh, he's still, okay. No further lights, then, roll call.
Milton? Pauls? Thompson? Festerson? Gernat? Jaram? Mr. President?
Yes.
Twenty-one is approved, seven-zero. Item number twenty-two is Chipotle's Mexican Grill. Request permission to open Brian Hexel, manager of their locations at thirty-six oh five north one hundred and forty-seventh street, two oh one south seventy-second street, twenty-seven seventeen south one hundred and seventy-seventh, and one hundred and thirty-two oh three West Center Road.
Public hearing on agenda item number twenty-two is today, proponents, please.
Brian Hexel, fourteen oh one, Wincup, Denver, Colorado.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Saying none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve item twenty-two, no lights, roll call.
Milton? Pauls? Thompson? Festerson? Gernat? Jaram? Mr. President?
Yes.
Twenty-two is approved, seven-zero. Item number twenty-three is Soho's Lounge, one hundred and twenty-one, forty-three, West Center Road. It is a long form renewal for the nineteen, two thousand sixteen-seventeen licensing year requested by the Attorney General and Assistant City Attorney. We have a communications requesting a two-week layover till November twenty-second and continue the public hearing so we can send notification out.
They're moving and seconded to layover item twenty-three for two weeks and continue the public hearing, there are no lights, roll call.
Milton? Pauls? Thompson? Festerson? Gernat? Jaram? Mr. President?
Yes.
Twenty-three is laid over two weeks. Item number twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six will take together. Twenty-four is Big Red Kino is granted approval to operate a satellite Kino location at Gino's Bar and Grill, thirty-eight twenty-one north one hundred and sixty-seventh Court. Twenty-five is Tanner's Bar and Grill at thirty-eight oh nine north Ninetieth, and twenty-six is the New Frontier Bar at eighty-five sixteen north thirtieth street.
Public hearing on agenda items numbers twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six is today, proponents, please.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is Katrina Coffey. I'm Vice President of Park Need for Big Red Kino. We're located at one-one-two-four-eight John Colt Boulevard. I have with me today the three owners of these three applications, and we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moving and seconded to approve items twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, no lights, roll call.
Milton? Pauls? Thompson? Festerson? Gernat? Jaram? Mr. President?
Yes.
Twenty-four through twenty-six are adopted, seven-zero.
Thank you.
Consent agenda, any mayor of city council may cause an item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed consent agenda shall be taken out by city council following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed, unless otherwise provided by city council rules of order.
The public hearings on agenda items numbers twenty-seven through thirty were held on November first, twenty sixteen. Moving and seconded to approve, no lights, roll call.
Milton? Pauls? Thompson? Festerson? Gernat? Jaram? Mr. President?
Yes.
Twenty-seven through thirty are passed, seven-zero.
The public hearings on agenda items numbers thirty-one through thirty-eight are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent.
Good afternoon. I'm here with agenda number thirty-five, Patty McAtee with the Greater Omaha Chamber, address thirteen oh one Harney Street, Omaha, Nebraska. And I'm just here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other representatives who wish to be heard?
Good afternoon, Thomas Warren, Urban League of Nebraska, three zero four zero Lake Street. I'm here in support of...
Thirty-six.
I'm sorry, thank you. Agenda item number thirty-six, and here to ask any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to be heard? Public hearing is closed. I just, just one question. Austin Rouser did give me a call. But I just wanted to have one, the only question that I have is if we, because it seems to, this is something that we do every year. And so I'm just wondering if we only have one bidder next time? Is our process going to be to do another bid for a secondary contractor? How are we going to handle that this time? If we should have that again? It may work, it may not, Todd.
Bear with me. Todd Pitzer, Public Works. Councilman, I think we'd be open to discussion on that. I know this year we resolved it doing a bid process for a secondary. Certainly, it would be our hope that we would get more than one bidder. Should we only get one next year, I think we'd be open for discussion on how to handle that. I think the email kind of explained this year that it was, it was kind of an oversight on one of the bidders. So hopefully, that'll resolve itself next year. But certainly, we would work with council desires on that.
Okay. And just making sure that those who are in the area that do have the ability to bid, at least get a notice.
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
There are no further lights, it's been moved and seconded, it's not been moved and seconded. Motion approved, items thirty-one through thirty-eight. There's a second, no lights, roll call.
Milton? Pauls? Thompson? Festerson? Gernat? Mr. President.
Yes.
31 through 38 are adopted, seven-zero. Resolution for legislative packages, item number 39, resolution that request to council member Gurnett, legislative package shall include a proposal that makes the conviction of a crime for using a facsimile weapon carry the same penalty as using a real weapon.
Public hearing on agenda item number 39 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Gurnett.
Thank you, Mr. President. Part of our legislative package last year. Jack, would you mind coming up and give us a Cliff Notes version?
Jack Chaloha, City Lobbyist. Yes, Councilmember Gurnett. In 2015, we had and supported a bill, LB14, I believe it was, which was exact detail of what this resolution talks about. It was referenced to the Judiciary Committee. The bill sat there after its public hearing for the two years and did not advance out of committee.
I'd certainly like to try that again, council members. Would appreciate your support. Thank you, Jack.
They're moving and seconded to approve. There are no further lights. Roll call.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
39 is adopted, seven-zero. Item number 40, resolution that request to council member Gurnett, legislative package shall include a proposal that lowers the five-minute time between Keno games.
Public hearing on agenda item number 40 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Gurnett.
Jack, would you come back up? Cliff Notes version?
Yes, sir. Jack Chaloha. This idea's been around for the last few sessions, various bill numbers. It's been part of kind of a comprehensive change in various gaming laws to kind of a standalone proposal or Keno changes. It's advanced out of committee a few times, but when it gets to the floor, it hasn't been approved yet. Some people are of the mindset that if you speed up Keno games, that it would give people a chance to play more games, and therefore, they may lose more. And so it becomes a question of, is this expanded gaming or not? In the end, I mean, Keno's here, and people are allowed to play it. So that's the status. It just hasn't been approved.
Thank you.
Make a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Mr. Gurnett, I've been down to the legislature for, on the last three legislative sessions on just this one item, well, on other items, but I've been down to testify on this one on several occasions, and I have yet to understand why we can't break that five-minute barrier. But I'm willing to go with you and try it again.
We can name a portion of I-80 for you.
Yeah, I traveled so much. It's been moved and seconded to approve, Mr. Jaram.
Yeah, this is something I've supported in the past, but I think, not speaking for the majority, but it was my sense that the majority of the committee thought that this, by sending it down again, when we've had no success, it would be taking the precious time that our city's lobbyist has to be working on other things, expending capital, so to speak, in terms of advocating for other issues. And so while I support the concept, I, my position is, is that the legislature has said pretty clearly the last couple of years, they're not ready for this. Big Red last year told us they don't have the technology yet to speed it up. So they're not ready. So that's why I'm voting the way I'm voting today.
Thank you. Mr. Gurnett.
It's my understanding that from Big Red, that they have an opportunity to get this technology if they had the change in the statute, and that we have a new crop of state senators coming in. The mindset may be different. It did make it to the floor for discussion, but there may be, but we don't know that until we get something in writing down there. That's what I see. My thoughts. Thanks.
Okay. There, it's been moved and seconded to approve. There are no lights. Roll call.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
21 is adopted, seven-to-zero. Item number 42, resolution that request to council member Gray, legislative package shall include proposal for foreclosure of tax liens after two years, which mirrors our state constitution.
Public hearing on agenda item number 42 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Gurnett.
Urgent support based upon what's been presented. Thank you.
Second.
They're moving and seconded to approve item 41. No further lights. Roll call.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
21 is adopted, seven-to-zero. Item number 42, resolution that request to council member Gray, legislative package shall include proposal to eliminate the good-time law during sentencing for those convicted of crimes.
Public hearing on agenda item number 41 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Since, Jack, let's have you come up and give us a little, just the Cliff Notes version of what we did last year.
Yes, sir. Jack Chaloha, City Lobbyist. We did introduce the bill last year where we were trying to expedite tax foreclosure liens, but it was only for those properties found to be in violation of various building or housing code, or weed and litter, as well as the building had to be abandoned. At the public hearing, there was one witness who opposed it, the Lancaster County, I think it was treasurer or assessor, and his thought was, I have no way of knowing which buildings were abandoned, and he thought the task would fall to him without any extra staff, and so he was opposed. And one of the senators made the suggestion, why don't you try it two years across the board for everybody, if that's what the constitution says? So I think that's what led our president to offer this one today.
Yes. And let me just say that I've, I've had various conversations with a couple of council members, and especially Ms. Milton and I have talked about this extensively. And I'm kind of at a crossroads with it, because I know it would be a benefit to our land bank, which we created, because it would give them the opportunity to go in and potentially purchase abandoned properties and bring them back before they get to the point of no return and having to tear them down. And I know that there are other entities in the community, especially some of the nonprofits, that would like to do some of the same thing. But Ms. Milton has made me aware, and I do, don't disagree with her, about the possibility of others getting caught up in, in this issue. People who, you know, elderly, who may not have had, who may have gotten a property through someone passing away and them taking over the property and not remembering that they have to pay the taxes, and in some instances, not doing it. So at this point, I think it would require a little bit more study, I think, so that we can, you know, potentially do it right. So I'm going to ask if someone could make a motion to withdraw.
Motion placed on file.
They're moving and seconded to place item 42 on file. Ms. Milton.
I just wanted to say, I actually support your intention of being able to get those abandoned properties, those troubled properties, the ones the land bank's buying up, Habitat for Humanity, and get those into the hands of somebody that's going to clean them up, too. I think I would like to work with you to find that balance to where we're not, we're not creating unintended consequences.
Yeah, let's, let's take this. I think placing on file is the appropriate thing to do at this point. They're moving and seconded to place on file. No further lights. Roll call.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
42 is placed on file. 43, resolution that request to council president Gray, legislative package shall include proposal to eliminate the Tax Equalization and Review Commission.
Public hearing on agenda item number 42 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. We've got a light. Oh, Dr. Thompson.
Yes, Mr. President. I have heard that you have an either-or on this.
Yes.
The either is to eliminate, or the or is to have some oversight.
Yes.
And could you help me understand a little bit more the second option?
The second, well, first of all, what, let me back up and say, what I believe, my feelings about what happened in North Omaha with this Turk Board this time was discriminatory at best. And I mean at best. I'm really upset about this. I've heard from various people in the community. I'm hearing from seniors who are having folks knock on their doors and asking to buy their houses, you know, because of what this Turk Board did. And the fact that they can do it with no oversight is problematic for me. I, I'm not necessarily in favor of the elimination of this board, but this board needs to have oversight, because what they did in North Omaha was discriminatory and unfair, and it has caused no end of problems to individuals in North Omaha. A number of individuals have had to go down and argue about their property valuations in a number of instances, and Douglas County will tell you that they've had a record number of people from North Omaha who've come down and asked for their property values to be raised, because they recognize what this problem can do, what kind of effect it could have on that particular area. So I do have an either-or. I would be willing to, to discuss some oversight measures with the, with the senators. I would, I would not like to see it eliminated, if at all possible, but it, to my, in my judgment, it cannot exist the way it is with no oversight. And once they, whatever they say is final, that ought to be unacceptable to all of us, but it is certainly unacceptable in North Omaha in this instance.
I have a question and comment and a question.
Sure.
The comment is that I've, I've heard you speak quite passionately about gentrification.
Yeah.
And it sounds like this would be one of the first steps of that happening, coming in and buying up these homes and whatever, and then just because they've been lowered. So I have tuned my ear to that, to that argument. And so in this case, would we kind of amend it to say either-or, or what do you suggest?
You know, I don't have a problem with amending it to say either-or, but there ought to be some oversight if, in fact, it's not eliminated altogether, because I don't think you ought to have a board of unelected people deciding what you do in specific areas. And then you come into a city like Omaha, and you tell certain portions of that area that your property rates, your property values are going to go up, and then you tell another area that is already distressed that their property values are going to go down, where they're already marginal as it is. I think that's discriminatory, and I think it ought to be challenged. But I'm willing to, I'm willing to amend it to say, you know, the language that you talked about, but, but I'm certainly not willing to let this one go.
City legal?
Paul Crad, City Attorney.
Paul, would it be appropriate to craft the language amended here on the floor to where we leave it up to the senators to have discretion, so that it reads that we're concerned, we're not necessarily saying that we want to eliminate it, but we want the discussion of oversight.
And of no oversight.
And if no oversight, then elimination.
I think all I need to do is just make a simple motion here to include the oversight provision, that either-or, and that's, this is just a direction to Jack at this point.
Right.
So you don't have to get real specific.
Okay.
So if we would just go back and, and move to add the second portion of it.
Mr. President, I'd like to make that amendment.
Thank you.
Second.
And I assume your amendment would be to include a proposal to eliminate either-or oversight, the Tax Equalization Review Commission. Is that the way you want to word it, or how do you want to?
Would you word it again?
You could add in the or oversight after a proposal to eliminate.
Yes.
Or have oversight.
Legislative oversight.
Legislative oversight.
Yes.
There we go.
That's my amendment.
This move, we've still got a few lights on, but it's been moved and seconded to amend it to include that language. Let me get the other lights, and then we'll, I'll ask for the vote. Mr. Jaram.
Jack, is this going to make your job a little more difficult? Is it possible to do what, is it on the floor right now in form of an amendment?
Jack Chaloha, City Lobbyist. That's fine. If you offer this amendment to the resolution, that's fine. We'll still pursue the wishes of working group, Council President Gray, Senator willing to carry the bill. And if it looks like that, it's, it would be of best interest to, you know, not eliminate the Turk Board, but to modify their existence and review of their work. Either way, we can make it work, so.
Mr. Jaram's up next.
That's okay. I was deferring to senior member of the council. It's kind of a prerogative, I guess. But if you wouldn't go too far.
Okay.
I understand the frustrations both in some areas of our city, like your district, where there were reductions. One of the things you did not talk about was the impact that it would, decrease in value would have on those who have mortgages on their property or deeds of trust from lending institutions, which require a minimum equity ratio in terms of debt to equity. And if the value of these homes decreases at an amount where the deed to trust or the mortgage is triggered, it can cause hardship financially, because the bank could come back to the owner and say, hey, you have to pay more money to create equity at a level that keeps the value of your house in accordance with your loan agreement. Otherwise, they take the house, foreclose on it, default the note. So that's a very serious condition, and I don't know that really the Turk fully appreciated the gravity potential of that when they did what they did to lower values. Second, on the other end of the spectrum, some other people in my district, particularly in the central cores, you go west, starting in Dundee, and then into the western part of the city, that had just the opposite thing happen, where there was, I think, was a 7% across the board increase in their valuations. So the review process that I looked into, and I just wanted to know if Jack could confirm it, the present review process is if you disagree as a county assessor or as a property owner, you can go from Turk to the Nebraska Supreme Court, right?
I believe that's correct.
But there's no intermediary review by elected accountable, people who are accountable directly to the citizens through regular elections.
No.
And for, so that part of what I'm hearing today of this proposal that's reflected in the amendment is very appealing to me, so that there's at least the sense by the people who feel aggrieved on one end or the other, that there's some accountability in terms of reviewing what the decisions were of Turk. I think it's unrealistic to expect that the legislature's going to abolish the Turk Board. But in doing some other research, I, I noticed in, in speaking with one person who used the amendment is very appealing to me so that there's at least the sense by the people who feel aggrieved on one end or the other that there's some accountability in terms of reviewing what the decisions were of Turk. I think it's unrealistic to expect that the legislature's going to abolish the Turk Board. But in doing some other research, I noticed in speaking with one person who used to be a Revenue Department Director for the state, that, who was around when Turk was created, that what it was the compromise to was the push for a tax court in this state that didn't come about, and the legislature created this thing. So, as we often say about ordinances and laws we enact, sometimes they're not perfect and they need after a while, and after you've seen them work, they need to be changed and amended. So, I like the motion to amend that the council member Thompson did, and I will be supporting that.
Thank you. Mr. Pauls.
Thank you, Mr. President. Having been a little bit familiar with Turk, Jack, let me ask, who appoints the Turk Board?
As I understand it, they're appointed by the governor.
Okay.
Right now, I think it's a three-member panel.
Right. And do you know what their qualifications are? I can't recall.
I haven't studied it in great deal. I can't really speak to that. I don't know if you have to have various accounting degrees or things along those lines, but I'm just not sure.
Well, typically, it's not somebody just walking off the street. They're supposed to have some kind of a background. And this has been an issue for years. But the part that always, I question even when we come up some of these ideas, I think we ought to go down with the idea, you need to find a senator, then they will develop that bill with a staff that does that for a living. You give them a little bit of direction and they come back and give us some feedback and say, hey, this is what we're looking for. For us to say it needs this, this, or this, I think we do a lot of that on emotion. We need to have you talk to it, find a senator, get his or her staff to sit down with the bill drafters, come back with some legislation and say, hey, this is what you could possibly sell. That's how I interpret this. To me, we're just giving you basic guidelines. Is that?
I think that's fair. I mean, we typically pass a general resolution with the concept, and then the specifics get worked out as we go along, whether they're, you know, in tune with the politics of the bill or, you know, just other considerations, but nevertheless, we try to follow the general concept and bring the bill home.
So, okay, so we get throughout the ideas to you and you work with them for a while with the bill drafters and the legislature staff.
Absolutely.
You come back and share that with us? Is that, am I interpreting that correctly?
You're right on point. That's what'll happen.
Okay. And then, the bill may be out on the floor and it may be amended to not even look like what we currently want.
There's that possibility, but I mean, we'll stick true to what the general guidelines are and try to get it to say that much.
So, I think we should give you the, that's how I'm interpreting this.
Sure.
Give you the general thing, you come back and sit down with people who have concerns about it, and we go forth. You just need to find a senator to do it.
I'll be able to answer that for you in a minute.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Mr. Gurnett.
I'm being asked to answer.
Okay, all right. Let me just say a couple of things and then I'll call for the vote. Number one, on the issue that you raised, Mr. Jerome there, I don't disagree with you on that, but the other side of that spectrum is we have a number of folks in my district already who don't feel that the way they're being treated by some lending institutions is fair because they're not getting loans already. And in this particular instance, with that decrease, you have individuals now who, even if they wanted to go in and use the equity on their home to get a loan, that equity has been so decreased that most of them can't go in and do that. I don't disagree with your end of it, but there's this other end of it as well that I'm concerned about. Secondly, Mr. Pauls, when you talked about the senators, I already have a senator that's willing to introduce it. More importantly, I have been contacted by several members of the League of Municipalities, and I've also heard from the Nebraska Farm Bureau. They all want to get on board and help me figure out how we get this done. So, I'm pretty far down the road with a senator and with several members across the state that would like to get something done on this in one fashion or another.
Turk is going to be.
So, yeah, so, like I said, this is one that I'm not going to let go.
Do you purchase to cover all their overall?
I will. Well, vote to give me the option first, as Dr. Thompson talked about, and then we'll go from there. It's been moved and seconded to amend this to include some sort of oversight.
Legislative oversight.
Legislative oversight. There are no further lights, roll call.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls. Thompson. Festerson. Gurnett. Jerome. Mr. President.
Yes. Roll call.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls. Thompson. Festerson. Gurnett. Jerome. Mr. President.
Yes.
Forty-three has passed, or adopted as amended, seven to zero. Item number forty-four, resolution at the request of Councilmember Festerson, and the administration, the legislative package shall include support for legislation if introduced of a bill to seek funding for local governments to assist with Emerald Ash Bore problem.
Public hearing on agenda item number forty-four is today. Proponents please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. I requested this item again this year, and we did approve it unanimously two years ago, so I hope we do that again today. Just a quick update for those that I know are following this issue in our city. So, I've talked with Senator Panzine Brooks, who is also willing to pursue this again. She was the main champion for this at the time in the legislature when we first requested it. And what's different this time, of course, is that we have found the Emerald Ash Bore in Omaha. Last time, we were trying to be proactive in our management of it because we knew it was in Iowa and coming to Omaha, and it wasn't a question of if, but a matter of when. It was going to be in Omaha, and it now is here. It's the same thing now with Omaha and the rest of the state. The Emerald Ash Bore is here. It's not a matter of if, but when. It's going to be throughout the rest of the state of Nebraska. So, is this truly a statewide issue that we hope they'll pay attention to and be of assistance to municipalities across the state because it impacts them substantially in both aesthetic and financial way? So, this does request local funding support from local governments, but realizing the state's probably biggest issue this year is going to be its own budget, a billion-dollar deficit estimated at this time. Further appropriations may or may not be realistic. So, the way this is worded, I think, is also general that if that is in fact submitted, we will be supportive of that. But there may be other alternatives that could arise out of this support for local governments, too. One example of which is what they did in the New York State Legislature by providing tax credits to individuals and private property owners who also deal with this issue. Because today, we really only talked about this issue on public property, which is substantial, but it's also a substantial issue for individuals who now must deal with this issue on their own properties, too. So, that would be an example of how that could be helpful to the cause across the state without a fiscal note or appropriation that might be difficult or a challenge come January. And I would add it also incents individuals to replant with diverse species of trees, so preparing for the future as well. With that, I'll move approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve item forty-four. Mr. Thompson.
Thank you again, Mr. President. Brooke, if I could, Mr. Bench.
Brooke Bench, Parks and Recreation.
Yes, Brooke, is it true that one of the hardest-hit areas will be Regency?
That will be one of the areas. There are a lot of ash trees in that area.
Is the trees that are marked right now, is that city right-of-way, or is that commonly-owned outlaw property?
Most of the trees that are marked, a lot of those were marked with ribbons, and that was just for awareness so people would know where the ash trees are at. And we also have trees that will have a kind of a silver, it looks like a quarter, on the tree, and that shows that it will be marked for treatment.
But the area in which those trees are located, is that city property, or is that a Regency joint outlaw?
I'm not sure on what trees you're referring to, Councilman.
The ones that are marked for.
Most of those are on city right-of-way. The ones that are all on Regency Parkway, then there are some that are in the common areas inside the park.
Because I know Regency has special situations where they pay for, like, half and half, the city pays for half, and then they pay for half. Have we figured out yet who's going to have to pay that bill?
We are still working in negotiations with the Regency Neighborhood Association, and there are a lot of the trees that are in that area that the city will be maintaining and treating.
Okay. Well, due to the fact of the tour that Councilman Jerome and I took all over the city and not just in Regency, and due to the fact that this council has requested before help, Councilman Festerson and I will be supporting this.
Thank you. There are no more lights. It's been moved and seconded to approve item forty-four. Roll call.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls. Thompson. Festerson. Gurnett. Jerome. Mr. President.
Yes.
Forty-four is adopted, seven to zero. Item forty-five, resolution at the request of the mayor's office. The legislative package shall include a proposal that extends the time period to pay back special assessment costs associated with making unimproved city streets into city standard streets from ten years to twenty years.
Public hearing on agenda item number forty-five is today. Proponents please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Jerome.
Not to beat a dead drum, but this is a very important priority for the city as I see it because we've learned during the process that these unimproved streets just aren't going to be fixed in most cases on their own, that the costs of bringing them up to standard is outside the reach of the people who live along the right-of-way in a ten-year payback period. And while I would like to see the city migrate to a program where this is in the CIP at a much more robust level than what's proposed, I'm also mindful that I was in the minority on that position earlier when it was budget time, CIP time, when we had the conversations. So, I do think that this is something the city should be exploring. Do I think it is the answer? Probably not. I think we can do more and should do more, that if you live in the city, that you are a member in the city in full standing, not less than that. And when the city annexes these areas, it should be incumbent upon the city as a part of its cost analysis over the ten-year period to be factoring the costs of street improvements. That is done in some cases. In terms of past subdivisions, I know there was one that previous administration delayed in northwest Omaha, about Seventy-Eighth and Sorensen area that's now in the city, that had undersized streets, not to code. So, is this a first step? Is this something we should be doing? Yes. Do I support it? Yes. Do I think we should be doing more? Yes. But I would make the motion to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve. Ms. Milton.
Yes, I just wanted to say, I think this is just one of the steps that. I believe in my discussions with the mayor, this is something I was asking for. It came up actually in Keystone, in a neighborhood that, in an area that now belongs, that will now belong to Councilman Festerson, where they actually really were contemplating doing the street improvement at least, but the ten years was just too short. The twenty years would just enable the residents on that street the ability to pay for that a little bit better. So, I think this is just one aspect of the plan, but it's something that the council can't do, that we need passed in the legislature. So, I do, I was very supportive of this. I asked that this be on there. And also, just to the annexation, though, because I know none of the neighborhoods in my district that were annexed had unimproved roads, and I do believe that is something, I don't know if Ms. Pabon's out there. Ms. Pabon, have any of the neighborhoods that, in the last three years that we've annexed, had unimproved roads?
Cassie Pabon, Mayor's Office. Overwhelmingly, they are all built to city standard. There are few. There was one area in last year's package, the Plantation, which wasn't actually an SID that had a stretch of an asphalt road that their homeowners association took on. It still remains a private street because it actually is a private street. So, that is one thing, as the annexation process does go through, those streets are evaluated, cost through the ten-year cycle, that it's part of the annexation package for street repairs, and all of those things are all calculated and part of the cost of city services. But to my mind, that's the only one that really pops up over the last three years, yeah.
I just wanted to make sure that that was something, I know that maybe in the past that wasn't something we considered, but it is something that you're making a consideration when you're evaluating neighborhoods.
It is something that is made as a consideration as the administration works with the Planning Department, with the Public Works Department, and other departments on the annexation packages. I can't speak to what previous administrations have done, but that is something that is considered when we do an annexation package.
Thank you. And I would like that to continue. Thank you.
Dr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. President. City Finance?
Steve Curtis, City Finance.
Steve, currently, we have the ten-year limit, correct?
It's between five and ten years depending on the amount.
Five and ten. And what determines whether it's five, eight, or ten?
It's the dollar amount.
Dollar amount, okay. Is there, are there, is there interest that's attached to that?
I don't believe so.
So, it's interest-free payback?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. And then, Jack?
Jack Chaloha, City Lobbyist.
Jack, at one time, you and I had a conversation about the whole issue of disclosure. Many of the individuals in my district feel, especially if they came from out of town and they're not familiar with local politics, they feel that somehow they were duped or tricked, and then once they buy the house, then like they're stuck and somebody lied to them. And at one time, I had told you that disclosure would be an issue that we would be sending down with the Nebraska package, but since then, I've met with the Nebraska Realtors Association, and Senator Craig had met with me also. And they are requesting that the issue of disclosure be handled through a three-county solution along the eastern part of the state. They feel that if we took it statewide, that it would become a little convoluted and that the people in central and western Nebraska would have different needs, different, you know, desires. So, I wanted my colleagues to know that I pulled back on that particular request, and I will be following up with you after I have a second meeting. But the initial meeting is that the Realtors Association, the eastern branch of it, the chapter of it, are willing to work with us to the point where if they know where these places are concentrated, they're considering, they haven't, you know, bought into it 100% yet, but they're considering having their agents inform people who do look at homes in those areas. They're a little bit concerned that they'll take the financial hit for something that the city is not doing, but there's a lot of conversation about how that disclosure can and should, and should not be worded. So, I do want you to know that that's why that was pulled back, and I wanted my colleagues to know that that's the alternative for the disclosure issue that I'm pursuing.
Absolutely. That's correct, and we did have that discussion.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve item forty-five. There are no lights, roll call.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls. Thompson. Festerson. Gurnett. Jerome. Mr. President.
Yes.
Forty-five is adopted, seven to zero. Item forty-six, resolution at the request of the city prosecutor, the legislative package shall include a proposal that changes the term prompt consideration for a probation violation warrant so that it does not include situations where the defendant has refused to report to probation as ordered by the court.
Public hearing on agenda item number forty-six is today. Proponents please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve item forty-five, or item forty-six, sorry. No lights, roll call.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls. Thompson. Festerson. Gurnett. Jerome. Mr. President.
Yes.
Forty-six is adopted, seven to zero. Item number forty-seven, resolution at the request of the city prosecutor, legislative package shall include a proposal that allows county courts to order psychiatric examination similar to the authority of the district court.
Public hearing on agenda item number forty-seven is today. Proponents please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
Move and second.
Moved and seconded to approve item forty-seven. No lights, roll call.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls. Thompson. Festerson. Gurnett. Jerome. Mr. President.
Yes.
Forty-seventh is adopted, seven to zero. Item forty-eight, resolution at the request of the Omaha Police Department, the legislative package shall include a proposal that changes the penalties for witness tampering from a class four felony to a class two felony if charged with at least one underlying felony.
Public hearing on agenda item number forty-eight is today. Proponents please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
Move and second.
Moved and seconded to approve item forty-eight. No lights, roll call.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls. Thompson. Festerson. Gurnett. Jerome. Mr. President.
Yes.
Forty-eighth is adopted, seven to zero. Item forty-nine, resolution pursuant to the recommendation of the Law Committee. The City Lobbyist, Jack Chaloha, is hereby designated as official lobbyist for the City of Omaha and its citizens for the legislative committees and individual senators, and[1763.71] for the legislative committees and individual senators, and all city employees are authorized to furnish information, reports, and testimony for the legislature at the request of the city lobbyist.
Public hearing on agenda item number 49 is today, proponents please.
Jack Chaloha, city lobbyist, I would like to ask for your support on this resolution, and also, given this time, since this is the last item in our legislative package for 2017, to thank the city council, and also the mayor's office, all the departments, for taking this very seriously as we look at ideas for changes in state law, and I just want to let you know that I appreciate all your hard work. Thank you.
Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed, Mr. Jaram.
Yes, I just want to have Jack come up, this is kind of your first year on your own, so to speak, where you're not down in our council office, but if things continue as though you represented that they would, they'd remain the same, and so far, so good, that the process continues as we've done. You've acted as you have in years past, you've continued that tradition, and although you're now on, is it the eighth floor?
Eighth floor.
In the law department, you know there are eyes in the community that'll be watching you, and letting us know if they somehow think that you're not the same old Jack that you've been. So, wish you luck this session, and I know it's long days, long hours, and it's a long session, I think it's a 90-day this year.
It is.
So we'll see you in June.
June 2nd, they're scheduled to adjourn, so.
Good luck.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Moving seconded to approve item 49, no lights, roll call.
Milton, Pauls, Thompson, Festerson, Gurnat, Jaram, Mr. President.
Yes.
49 is adopted, seven to zero. Pursuant to City Council Rule 78, the third reading of public hearing on agenda item 50 through 58 shall be held on November 22nd. Pursuant to City Council Rule 78, the third reading on agenda item number 59 shall be held on November 22nd. The public hearing on this item is today. Ordinance on second reading, ordinance vacating 207th Street, formerly known as Hillcrest Street slash 207th Plaza, from Glenn Street extending Norley. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number 59 is today, proponents please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed, next item.
Pursuant to City Council Rule 78, the third reading of public hearing on agenda items 60 through 63 shall be held on December 6th. Pursuant to City Council Rule 78, the second reading of public hearing on agenda items 64 through 67 shall be held on November 22nd. On the supplement, there's a reconsideration, item 69, motion by Councilmember Milton to reconsider CCID number 961 of September 20, 2016, being ordinance to amend ordinance, Omaha Municipal Code, Chapter 19, to provide for applicability of the Restaurant Occupation Act to certain food vendors to clarify the enforcement, with a roll call on November 22nd. We need a second.
Second.
We can now adjourn.
Roll call, I'm sorry.
Milton, Pauls, Thompson, Festerson, Gurnat, Jaram, Mr. President.
Yes.
Stand adjourned at 3:52 PM.